Good morning and welcome to the second monthly meeting of the Greenwich Board of Selectmen. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
This is a public meeting, it is not a public hearing. The Chair reserves the right to call upon any interested party in attendance to pose question or comment on any matter that's before the Board today. There are copies of the meeting's agenda on the table, along with two sets of the materials that the Board will be considering for action. Item number two is approval of minutes from the meeting that was held on September 10th. Are there any corrections to those minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
Okay. With that, I'm sorry. Item number three, first selectman updates, looking at some of the past events, just to quickly recap, there was a very poignant and moving ceremony dedicating the new 9/11 memorial out at Cosco Park, in addition to the annual remembrance ceremony at the Glenville Fire Station. I want to commend all folks involved with that and making those two events really meaningful and special to the community, and particularly the families who were impacted. Fashion on the Avenue was rescheduled to September 16th. Jerry Corrigan and her team put on a nice program and once again were able to promote the merchants and retailers that are part of the Greenwich community. We had a proclamation issued for Constitution Week. This is in conjunction with the Putnam Cottage and the, I'm trying to think of the right name, Daughters of the American Revolution and Sons of the American Revolution, and it's part of their educational program. That was on September 16th. Some of the meetings that were held over the last period of time, there was a meeting with the YWCA of Greenwich as they look at their costs and associated with providing services in our community, particularly their domestic abuse services in the public schools. I arranged a meeting between their administration, as well as the Chair of the Board of Education, to consider looking at providing some support through the 1617 budget to offset their costs for that program. So that was really an arranged meeting to develop knowledge and understanding as to what they're doing and how best they can perhaps continue to provide those services in a challenging fundraising environment. The Youth Commission met on September 16th. There were a couple items on their agenda. Notably, they are contemplating putting together a discussion or survey, I should say, on of their peers on the school's start time issue. They recognize there's a very short period of time to do it, but they were discussing amongst themselves a meaningful way to survey their peers about what their preferences are in terms of later start time. In addition, they are contemplating a measure to bring forward to restrict plastic bottles at the high school. They've done some research and they've determined the sheer volume of them and if they were able to reduce that out of the waste stream, what it would mean for the environment. If you looked at the number of bottles per year at five cents, I want to say it was something like $50,000 if you collected all of the returns and sent them in. So, the Commission is really designed for the young people to develop the agenda, not voiced an agenda on them, and so they're working through that. We're trying to teach them, you know, Robert's Rules and how to incorporate varying thoughts, but that was the two items that they were discussing. On Friday, September 18th, I met with all of the incoming BET members, along with our Town Administrator Ben Branyan, our Senior Management Analyst Melissa Jones, as well as the Fire Chief. And the purpose of the meeting was to bring them up to speed as to where the other BET members are on a report that we compiled over the last three months, looking at staffing and Northwest Station. And so we were able to address some questions that they had as they're beginning to digest this information, and we look forward to continuing the dialogue. The RTM meeting was held on Monday night. Our nominees are, several of them were appointed. Mr. Thong, who we brought forward for the Inland Wetland and Water Courses Agency, was postponed until October because of scheduling a meeting with the Appointments Committee. But our other folks with the Commission on Aging, Planning and Zoning, and Nathaniel Witherell were approved. Future events, this afternoon, there is the YWCA's Annual Spirit of Greenwich Award, recognizing the volunteer and philanthropic contributions of women in our community. On Sunday, we've been working with the Parade Committee led off by Davida Strackbein, Mary Ellen Labine, and John Halpin, and others, to see to it that it goes off in a well-coordinated and organized fashion. That parade is the 375th Anniversary Parade for the Town of Greenwich, and it will be, again, starting out from Town Hall at 2:00 PM and following a course up Field Point Road, down West Putnam Avenue to Greenwich Avenue, and concluding out here in the field in Havemire with a unfurling of a 50-by-100, I believe, sized flag. And everyone is looking forward to the festivities. It will be following a more ceremonial route perhaps than the, or format than the St. Patrick's Day Parade in terms of keeping all the groups aligned so that they can be recognized. And so there are groups that span from the government organizations, non-government organizations, houses of worship, youth organizations, you name it, it will be represented. I believe there were up to almost 40.
You march in.
Yeah, the Greenwich time is, how about you, Leslie?
I'll take a picture.
You're not, you're gonna march too, though, as you take pictures.
I'll be running back.
Why don't you get a Sega? Sega, is that it? Segway? They make ones with no handles that you, I saw kids on that you could take pictures and move. So that's Sunday, so please tell folks to come on out for it. Next week, we are going to be kicking off with the United Way of Greenwich, their annual campaign. Very important for the Greenwich community to support United Way's effort to raise monies that go to a plethora of human service agencies that provide services from birth into golden years. The environment clearly is a challenging one with the economic changes that are taking place within our town, the state, and therefore dollars are becoming harder and harder to come by. And so it's important to know, United Way does an assessment, they evaluate the needs and they allocate the funding based upon that assessment. And so we would encourage folks to come and support the launch. October 1st, the Breast Cancer Alliance will be here at Town Hall to once again kick off Breast Cancer Awareness Month with a flag raising at 9:00 AM. This is certainly an issue that is, that touches many people. I don't know any family that hasn't had a loved one who has been afflicted with breast cancer, and certainly the work that the Alliance does in raising funds to place toward research and development of cures is very noteworthy. On October 4th, I believe that's a Sunday, the Greenwich Reform Synagogue is going to be having their groundbreaking. It is going to be a rather modest affair. They're going to just note the start of the work. They've been through a very long process to gain their approvals. Other topics, on October 5th, they'll be delivering a State of the Town Address sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, that is, I believe, at the Hyatt, and look forward to be talking about the town and really a glimpse into where we are and where we are heading and what challenges that are confronting us. Lot to celebrate, though, about Greenwich. On October 7th, tentatively, there's a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Greenwich High School Performing Arts Center. This is certainly a long time in the making, and I was out there today taking pictures of trees for one of the building committee members who had an issue with their location and trying to get that resolved. October 12th, we'll be having the Columbus Day Flag Raising here at Town Hall. I believe that is going to start at 9:00 AM. Another meeting that I did have that I also noticed, on September 11th, I had a meeting with representatives from Aquarian Water Company with Commissioner Seibert, having requested from them some of their information about their breaks that they've had in town and what's been the cause of the breaks. They were very forthcoming with information about the nature. I mean, some of them are due to geological changes and shifts. Some of them could perhaps be caused by, when they do flow testing, and some of them could be caused by obsolescence. There's no precise way to know what caused it, but they certainly do evaluate it, and was very happy to meet with Donna, pronounce her name here, Donna Parlatore, and John Walsh to discuss that. That concludes the updates, and our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 15th, in this room. Old business, there's nothing under old business. We do know, though, that forthcoming will be the municipal improvement request from the Board of Education to address relocation of the students who are presently at the New Lebanon Elementary School. Again, our role is to evaluate the request and use of the town property for that purpose. Again, we are awaiting their action. We have to, you know, depend upon them to facilitate moving it to us. New business, before us today, we have a request for municipal improvement at Wilbur Peck, which for purposes of a family center health clinic. Everyone is familiar in town with family centers and the role that they play. They were instrumental in obtaining a grant. They were awarded new access point funding on August 10th, 2015, from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Service Administration Bureau of Primary Healthcare, to renovate existing space at Wilbur Peck Court in Greenwich and operate there a federally qualified health center. Family Centers Health Care at Wilbur Peck will be located in what was formerly the Family Action Center on the ground floor of Building Number Three, approximately 1,300 square feet. The grant is time-sensitive and requires the Family Center Health Clinic to be open in 120 days following notice of award, which translates to December 10th, 2015. They're anticipating a grant opening and ribbon-cutting sometime in early 2016. Target population is public housing primary care, which is a special designation under Section 330I of the Public Health Servic Act of 1990, targeting a special population, specifically residents of public housing. Health Center projects funded under Section 330I must ensure the availability and accessibility of required primary and preventive healthcare services to residents of public housing and individuals living in areas immediately accessible to public housing. The new center at Wilbur Peck will primarily serve residents of Wilbur Peck Court and Armstrong Court. However, all Greenwich public housing tenants and residents of streets immediately surrounding Greenwich public housing may utilize the Family Center Health Clinic. Documented in their submission to us, which I'm reading, "Research has shown that public housing residents have the worst health of any population in the United States. Barriers to health, barriers to care include transportation, uninsured or underinsured, inconvenient office hours, and the cost of doctor visit copays and prescription medications. Gaps to care and health access include all the known factors related to low socioeconomic status. This new access point will directly address all the barriers to care and enhance access to primary health and oral health care for residents of public housing in Greenwich." This need was documented during a meeting with tenants, which was held, to provide information for the initial grant application. The health clinic located at Wilbur Peck will provide primary medical and oral health care. Additionally enabling services will include health education in case and care management. At the core of this unique model are distinct PHPC attributes that are common to all PHPC programming, culturally competent care, integrated continuum of care, access to care and referral to specialty care in the community, outreach, patient engagement, and case management, including certified access counselor. Use of health promotion education in the housing communities we serve, onsite providers will be a full and part, will be full and part-time and include one advanced practice registered nurse, APRN, or physician assistant, PA, one dentist, DDS, dental hygienist, RDH, and support staff, including operating in and out of the Family Center Health Clinic, a case manager or care coordinator, health insurance assistance enroller, and one receptionist. The clinic will not open at full capacity. It will take up to a year to reach the intended 48 hours per week of operation. Enrollment and utilization will dictate the necessity for the initial schedules. What we're acting on today is municipal improvement. Wilbur Peck is part of the portfolio of properties owned and operated by the Housing Authority of the Town of Greenwich. The proposed clinic will not change the footprint or exterior of Building Number Three, but rather renovate existing space previously used for Head Start Well Child Clinics and most recently to provide human and vocational services. The center will operate by appointment, mitigating any parking concerns, as the center can only serve three or four patients at any given time. Parking available at Wilbur Peck Court is more than sufficient, as documented in timestamp photographs taken at various times throughout the day and evening. Additionally, as expected, more people will walk to the center or take a bus than drive their car, as a great number of the intended population live onsite at Wilbur Peck. This was presented to the Board, and I read it for the record because we want to make sure it's very clear, by Bob Arnold, who is the President and CEO of Family Centers. With us today, we have two representatives, which if you'd like to comment further, we certainly welcome your introduction and to meet with us.
Dennis Torres, Director of Healthcare Programs.
Sure, Dennis, if you could come forward, that way it gets picked up on the mic. Welcome.
Hey. Dennis Torres, Director of Healthcare Programs at Family Centers. First and foremost, Bob Arnold wanted to be here, he had a conflict, so he sent me and Bob Short, who's the Vice President at Family Centers. And we were, last summer, very busy working on this application for this new clinic at Wilbur Peck Court. It was a way, it was probably the only way we could get a federally qualified health center here in Greenwich. And we had the support of Greenwich Hospital, we had the support of Town of Greenwich Department of Social Services, the Greenwich United Way, and numerous others, and pulled this together. And our, there were many people who told us all along the way, it'll never happen, it's a real long shot. We knew it was a long shot, but we stated the case and created, we, all we did was really exhibit the need that exists in public housing, and ultimately we were successful. So we're really excited, obviously, to get this going, get this open, and serve folks who historically have for, a number of years have gone to the hospital emergency room for routine medical care, which we all know is a very expensive way to administer healthcare. And this is, this is probably why we had such ground swell in support, because we, the focus for primary medical care is also prevention, so that not only we're going to treat people, we're going to help prevent and keep them from going to ER for what really is unnecessary visits. So the, of course, Greenwich Housing Authority has been a partner on this from the beginning, and without them, we couldn't have even considered using this room for this service. For my own self, I oversee six clinics in Stanford. This is the first clinic that Family Centers, actually, that's not true, I oversee five clinics in Stanford, one clinic I oversee is at Kids in Crisis here in Cosco, and this will be the first one downtown, that's an FQHC. So the experience is there, we know what we're doing, we know how to implement, what the HERSA guidelines are, and again, we're very excited to have this here.
Questions?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, how much is the funding that you received?
For the first year, it was, it was prorated because it was, it came mid-year, so we received about $567,000, $567,000, am I saying that right? A little more than half a million. And then for year two, $650,000 to cover the whole year. The first year, part of that funding is going to pay for the construction costs, so that takes a chunk of it, which is why the slower ramp-up to get to full-time, which will, year two starts June 1st, which is really not that far away.
So, the medical professionals, are they volunteers?
No, they're, they'll be paid staff.
Okay.
And they'll be on-call in the evening, there's going to be medical backup and to make sure that it's an all-inclusive responsive clinic.
So who covers the costs over time? So is the grant funding the initial remuneration to the medical professionals in addition to the capital?
Yes, and it, after this year two, or, you know, as year two comes to a close, it's what a service area competition opens up under HERSA, and we reapply for funding. So we're expecting to be funded by HERSA all along. Of course, we're going to bill insurance. FQHC has a higher rate than a regular medical clinic. For example, an outpatient clinic might get $40 for a visit, a medical visit, an FQHC rate is $150 rate reimbursement from insurance. So what happens is, when you, this payment might help offset the costs of someone who's uninsured, and you use a sliding scale to figure out their costs based on their income. So it's, I mean, it's certainly not a profit-making deal, because it needs to be funded by HERSA, but it's a, it's a well-thought-out model that I think is going to work well here.
Okay. I just have a couple comments. You know, I was thinking, out of all the votes I have taken in six years now, I think, you know, I would say there's probably hundreds of them, this, this today, an MI referral, for me anyway, will be one of the most meaningful acts of the utmost importance, and I say this all the time, you know, what's the best part about being selectman? And I, and I also say all the time, we might not get it right all the time, but it's, it's joyous, if you will, to be part of this process, and today is a good thing. This full-service primary care clinic will have a direct impact in the lives and well-being of many. Family Centers, HHS, Greenwich Housing Authority, all should be commended for making this happen. And the funding and implementation will soon result in a healthcare clinic that has the ability to educate families, treat and prevent sickness, short and long-term, and allow for medical professionals like physician assistants or nurse practitioners to form a one-on-one relationship with the community they serve and patients alike. And as noted, research has shown, and it's statistically speaking, that residents of low incomes or residents in public housing have the most challenged health of any population in the U.S. And that, and that's just a, you know, a statistic. You know, primary care prevention, you know, care that will increase access to a targeted demographic is good, obviously, for the residents and the people who are directly benefiting, but it's also good for Greenwich as a whole. And I say that because you see, when a simple cough can be treated at a clinic, that has the possibility of not developing into pneumonia, as an example, which does infect, that could infect or have impacts on outside of that populace, you know? So if you can prevent that, that's good for all of Greenwich. If you can prevent children from, you know, being sick with antibiotics there, it also then has a direct impact in school systems. This also, what is also a proven statistic, too, is, in terms of, you mentioned, emergency departments, this will absolutely deflate the amount of patients that are being seen in the area, because what we do know is, statistically, there are not enough primary care facilities in the United States. That's just a given fact. So we can have this debate on, you know, healthcare and Obamacare, et cetera, but that we do know, there are not enough primary care. So this, I enthusiastically support, and I think it's a well, well-thought-out endeavor, and I wish you the best of luck.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any other questions? Any questions? If not, we want to thank you, Bob, and thank you, Dennis, for being here with us. And at this time, we would entertain a motion to refer the item to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We know this is on a tight schedule, and thereby, I know you've worked with us and we've worked with P&amp;Z to really facilitate this so that they can work it through their prescribed time schedule. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve referral to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I do.
It's moved by Mr. Marzullo.
Sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you again, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number six, appointments and nominations. I know that we still endeavor for, appointment for housing that we've been looking for, and we have a position with Alarms, HDC, I think there's one, and Witherell, as well as Snack. So at this point today, is there any nominations or appointments that wish to be made?
Could I put forward the name of Sarah Keller for the Snack Committee? She is a former high school teacher. She serves on the boards of R Street, Glenville Point Conservancy. She's Chair of the Riverside Yacht Club Junior Sailing Program, and I think she'd be a good addition to the Snack Committee.
The name of Sarah Keller has been moved for appointment to the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Marzullo, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there another nomination? Do you have Audrey? Do you have Audrey McNiff? I don't have that. I may know Audrey. Do you, okay, I don't have that yet. I would move the appointment of Audrey McNiff to serve on the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee. Audrey is a retired, is retired from, I believe, Goldman Sachs. She's lived in town and volunteered her time and services to various causes and has the time and ability to help us identify and recruit individuals to serve in various town boards and commissions. So is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of appointing Audrey McNiff to the Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, they're three years, so they're June, we just have to, we just have to, so it'd be 18. 18. I believe they're, verify that, they're three. So those are, those are three years. We, this is an, this is an ad hoc committee, unlike some of the town boards and commissions, which are prescribed in charter or statute. The Nominations Advisory Committee has been in effect for now, probably going on nine to 10 years, and these folks are appointed by the Board to assist in identifying people to serve on the other established boards. to serve on the other established boards and commissions within the town. Mike, do you have the sheet for -- to look at Alarms? Could we move Mr. Yeski? We'd be taking -- I think the cutoff is 10:29 for RTM. I think. So our next meeting is October 15th. Hopefully, we can round out some of these for those that have to get to the RTM. Our next meeting, you said it was?
October 15th.
So the cutoff for?
October 2nd of the fall.
Can I move him?
Let's take a -- let's go. Why don't you go get it? We'll take a break from that. We're just going to take a two-minute recess just to get some paperwork to look at the status on one of the boards that we can fill one of the vacancies.
Peter, when is that meeting with the United Way, with the campaign kickoff?
I don't know. We're waiting with that Stewart's call. Another hack to Jenny.
I'm going to get you a blanket.
What?
It's the worst. 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 Technically, yesterday is fall.
Oh, my God. How do you ever get used to it?
Worst. Unless you're in Arizona. People would have died.
They sell their house, they fly out there with their bags of money.
Keel over in the desert.
Okay, we're just resuming nominations and appointments. Mr. Marzullo?
Just for the Alarms Appeal Board. Term ending, it's a 3/31/18. Correct. There is an opening. Peter Yeski, I don't have -- I know Peter personally. He's a volunteer fireman and some others, very well-known in town, too, so I know him personally. I don't have his resume at --
Sure. I mean, I think we all have been involved or interacted with Peter. He's given a lot of his time to the Coscop, by our police patrol, and raised some monies to help them achieve their objectives with capital procurement, and this is an important board to adjudicate matters that relate to public safety alarm systems. So happy to second his nomination. Great. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. So, Michael, if you could notify not only SNAC, but then the candidate, and then also advise them that they'll have to appear before -- he'll likely appear before Town Services and I think that might be the only one. Oh, and appointments, and appointments. Are there any other appointments and nominations?
Just, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to, as you two know, just tonight, they will -- the Board of Education is meeting 10:00 around 7:00, and tonight they will be voting on the architect, just to give you --
Okay.
I'll give a more formal update, I think, at our next meeting, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Yeah, next meeting for that.
This is our esteemed representative to the New Lebanon School Building Committee.
I like it.
And this is our esteemed representative to the Harbor Management Commission.
Yeah, who got that?
No, it's all about collaboration. Remember, it's a government of "we," not me. On that note, there's no executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Without objection. 10:52.